Hello, everyone. My name is Jack Veluskas. Some of you may know you, some of you don't know me. So you probably ask yourself who I am, why I'm running and what I'm running for. So who am I? First and foremost, I'm a Christian, I'm a husband, I'm a father, and I'm a longtime resident of Klein ISD. I attended Roth Elementary, Hildebrand Intermediate, and I graduated from Klein just, just a few years ago. The district is deep in my family. I've got family that work here. I have two daughters that graduated from Klein, one graduating in 2012 and one graduated in 2014. I currently have three sons that attend the Klein schools. I've got one in fifth grade, one in sixth grade, and I've got one in second grade. So if you're keeping track, that's five kids, three that are still in the schools. You know, the, the district has helped shape the generations of my family and it's deeply reflected, you know, and I care strongly about its future. So why, why am I running? Well, a passion for service has been instilled into me by my family. My grandfather served our country in World War II. My father also served. My father also received the prestigious position. He was the first Hispanic to be the Senior Listed Advisor for the Texas Air and Army National Guard. Their legacy inspired me to serve. My service has taught me discipline, accountability, and service for itself. These attributes I would bring if elected to the board. Professionally, I have over 20 years' experience in supply chain operations, supply chain and, and operations management. Through the course of my career, I've had to manage multimillion dollar budgets and hold them accountable to work within a budget. What am I running for? I'm running for Board of Trustees because I believe that we truly, the, the, a school board truly represents the will of the people. And I don't see that right now. I see a, a board that is just rubber stamping things and has voted unanimously for the last three years at the expense of our students and our community wishes. Like in business operations, Klein ISD Board should be held accountable to work within a budget. Over the past three years, they've passed budgets that are in deficit. Twenty twenty-three, they passed a deficit of 23.7 million and 24, 33.8 million. And this last year, they passed a $21 million budget. The community deserves a board that asks hard questions, demands accountability, and ensures the priorities and reflect the values of the Klein ISD families. I will vote if elected against any budget that's in deficit. My top priorities for, for, if elected are the students and teachers and ensure they have a safe and disciplined working environment, fiscal responsibility, and restoring accountability to the Board of Governors. I believe a school system should focus on reading, math, history, science, and vocational skills, while respecting the rights of the parents and keeping politics out of the classroom. If elected, I'll remain visible, both to the, the students and the parents to hear their concerns, to ensure their voice guides me as a trustee. Furthermore, as a follower of Jesus Christ, my commitment is to lead with integrity, honesty, and a servant's heart. Luke 16:10 reminds us, whoever can be trusted with very little can be trusted with much. I believe we are called to be good stewards of the resources we're entrusted to and ensure the students of Klein ISD has the opportunity to succeed. Together, we can ensure Klein ISD has a place, comes back to a place of excellence for generations to come. I humbly ask for your trust, your support, and your prayers. Thank you. This is Dr. Huff.
All right, so Jack mentioned that the board is accountable to the constituents. Sorry, we just kind of slipped in right here.
Okay, that's why.
Yeah, Jack mentioned that the board is, is accountable to the constituents, the voters that vote board members in. And they expect for the board members in to reflect the values that they have. Now, that's, that's a, that's a big, big job because there are many different people that hold different values across our, our district. But on a, on a broad, broad spectrum, values don't change that much. They want a good education for their kids. They want a safe environment for their kids to go to, and they want opportunities for their kids after high school. Those are the big three things that I think most parents want. Now, you could say Klein provides all of that, but there's something that they, that they have, that they do, that they foster, that takes them away from being accountable to the constituents that voted them in. You see, it's a big club and we ain't in it. The bar where it's some George Cardinals. And so I say that, that education is a big, big operation statewide and nationwide. And there are different entities that control the agenda of education. So you've got the legislature. First of all, you've got Washington DC, and they haven't taken their hands off of us, even though President Trump likes to counterfeit what they have. They haven't. They're still very much involved in many of the programs. But at the state level, you've got the two houses, the Senate and the House, the two chambers, I should say. And then you've got the State Board of Education, who are elected officials on top of the elected officials in the House and the Senate. But then you have the TDA, and the TDA is bureaucrats that have been involved for many, many, many years. And some of them never change. You could say they're the deep state of Texas education. And you have the Commissioner of TDA that is appointed by the governor. So this is how the agenda gets controlled. And then we have an organization, two organizations that control the local governance of education. We have TASVE, the Texas Association of School Boards, and we have TASSA, Texas Association of School Administrators. And of course, TASVE works to steer the school boards in the direction that they need, they think they need to go. And TASSA works to control the administrators in the direction that they need to go, they think they need to go. So you have all of these organizations, the legislature, State Board of Education, TDA, the Commissioner, Governor, Superintendent Governor, TASVE, and TASSA, all working together to keep education on the same track. So when we of independent thinking inject our thoughts and ideas as to what we think should be happening, they fall off that field much of the time. Now, let me bring this around to something that will be part of the team. Klein, I love Klein. I truly do. It was my dream to be a principal in Klein. I was principal at Club and I was principal at Klein High School. I spent 19 years of my 34 years in Klein, but they have lost their way. And this is why I'm working to help get them back. And I think it won't happen until we get board members that begin to think for themselves. So we have a, we have a group, group thing. You've all heard of group thing and what that is. Well, there's a thing called, and this is developed by TASVE, Texas Association of School Boards, on the team of eight. The team of eight involves the seven members of the school board and the superintendent. To present it next to eight, member of the team of eight. And they're all supposed to be as one. And so if they have any disagreements, they settle them behind the scenes. And then when they come out to be in front of the public, they're all supposed to be together. And so the discussion, any discussion of a, agenda item that is being discussed at night, they're all in agreement on whatever it's going to be. That's just the way the team of eight works. So when you have that, when you have that, you have a political entity. These people are politicians. They do run. They are elected. You have a, a political entity that is not representing the people who elected them. That's the most important thing for you to understand from what I'm talking about. They represent the administration. They are supposed to all be together. So when, when we as the constituents elect board members, we elect them because, and we think because they're running this way, they, they're going to be accountable to us. And so when we go to state a complaint, we want them to listen to us because we elected them. Unfortunately, we don't get that. We get black faces when we go before them to talk. And they say, well, we can't, we're not allowed to converse with you. That's not true. The board member can ask the question of the person giving the testimony, and they could have that conversation. They just can't talk amongst themselves. But the board members are being led to believe that they cannot ask any questions of people who are testifying. So we're out to change that. We're thankful that Denise is there. She got elected last go around. We're thankful that she's there, but she needs help. And this is why we're running Jack and Justin for those two positions. We've got to get them in. Denise needs help. So what we're asking you to do is spread the word, get the word out there that we need two members replaced. Rob Ellis and then the open seat that is being represented by Dustin Kreiber, who was already defeated once, and now he's coming back to try to get back on the board again. Denise being last to work. So I appreciate all of y'all coming out tonight, and I'm going to give it back to Jack and let him organize the team of eight, and, and we'll take it from there. Now, just remember, you want your board members to represent you. You don't want them just to be rubber sands for the superintendent.
If y'all do, if y'all do want to help, we do have a PAC, uh, and you can Zelle to strongeratklein@gmail. Money is a way that helps us fight and hopefully get Bumpy and I onto this board.
Hello, everyone. I'm Nikki Tension, and well, I was a parent, but my kids recently graduated. Twins actually, class of 2025. I have an older son that went through the Klein, um, school district. He's now 25 years old. So I've been a parent in Klein for quite some time now. And since my twins have gone through the school system, I've noticed lots of things that have occurred. One thing is the grievance process and it kind of, kind of mimicked a little bit of what Pat was saying, um, as far as to that and what kind of got me started and also got Bumpy, um, involved as well. Uh, when a parent or even an employee, um, has a complaint or the formal way of doing it, or what they call it is you file a grievance, which is a formal complaint, um, to the district. And so there's three levels to that, level one, level two, and level three. And of course, I'm not going to get too detailed because we can't be here all day. After filing and going through the grievance process, what really shocked me was whenever I got to the level three, and this is what everyone has to go through. You meet in front of obviously administrators and some past staff who you met with previously through your level one and two. When you get there, you're going to meet with an independent hearing officer. There is not an independent hearing officer. Who your independent hearing officer is, is a former employee in the district. Rather, if it's a retired educator, a former principal, just someone related or intertwined with inclined ISD. Um, or it can even be a work acquaintance, a former work acquaintance who they work with in another district. And, uh, whenever this came about, I was like, whoa, wait a minute, let's stop the brakes. This isn't right. We've got to do something. After digging and doing further research, no one wins in Klein ISD. It's the Klein win policy when you file a grievance. And sadly, we have lost a lot of good teachers, a lot of good, a lot of good teachers. I mean, it's heartbreaking that the amount of calls that Bumpy and I do get on a day-to-day basis, even parents, students. And the sad part is that the school board, even the superintendent, is not putting the students first. Sense are not put first. There is no compassion. There is no respect. There's, there's none of that. And, um, and like I says, and just going to school board meetings and when parents and even good employees are standing and they're speaking for the two minutes that they get, and then the way that they're treated, they're not taking notes. They're not taking the complaint or the situation serious, um, by any means. Basically, you're given your two minutes, and if you're shut off and once the buzzer rings, that's it. And they are allowed to even give you another 10 or 15 or 30 seconds. Hey, I want to hear what you have to say, you know, never mind the timer. Can you, can you finish what you have to say? That does not occur unless you're on Klein's side. If you're on Klein's side and it's happy, 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 lucky, great things that they want to hear and see, then they'll, they'll give you that extra 10 or 20 seconds to speak. But why not let people speak when there's something going on? Everything isn't going to be good and everything, and there's going to be, like I says, bad things, good and bad. But the superintendent is no longer a part of the process. This is the kicker. The superintendent is no longer a part of this process. She has pawned it off on the Chief of Education in Klein ISD. She has a right to not know what's happening and what's going on, and that's another problem. She makes $600,000 a year. We're paying her out of our tax dollars. And you better believe she should be knowing everything that's happening in this school district. Yeah, let that, let that sink in. It's unbelievable. So that's another big problem, um, that we're faced with. And again, it's just accountability, like who is holding people accountable in this district? No, no one even knows. And like, again, the safety, I'll touch on that just a little bit. Another thing is the school board did not open an internal investigation when the Klein Kane tax trafficking situation, um, came about, besides the teacher remaining there for an additional 14 months. But even then, the board could have opened up an internal investigation. And Krieger, Rob Ellis were, were a part of it during this time when we're sitting on that board. We still have no answers to that. My children were in that school during this entire time. Again, there are still no answers to that. So these are real problems that are occurring that we as a community have no answers. There's no transparency. Again, we know how Klein likes to sweep things under the rug. That is still happening. It's time to bring truth, transparency, whether if it's good or bad, to light. And that's not happening, um, in Klein ISD, which is why Bumpy is running. Again, safety, and then again, representation for all. That's another problem. There is not representation for everyone in this district. I can tell you now, I have talked into mountains of parents, even employees, students even. They do not feel represented on the south end of Klein at all. I mean, it is so sad when we go out and block walk or meet the parents. They're like, oh, my gosh, I am so happy to see someone that is from Klein ISD. And I'm like, I'm just a parent. I'm not an employee. I'm not. And I mean, and they are just thanking me, hugging me, like, I can't believe you came out to see me or you want to ask me or you. It just, it really blows my mind. They only go on the south end of Klein only when it's good things. If they win in track and field or football or something or basketball, that's the only time they are over there is for a photo op. And I'm just going to keep it raw for a photo op. But the photo ops and all that, they, they never go over there. But if you go and interview and ask anyone, they're going to say we are underserved. We do not see anyone unless it's something good, something that's out for them. So that, that definitely needs to change. They're paying taxes too. How we're, like, we're paying taxes, so why are they underserved? So that's, again, is another issue. But so again, we need board members, which is why Jack and Bumpy are running. We need representation for all, not representation for some. That's another, like I says, another big one, um, just being out in community and hearing it from the public. But change is definitely, um, needed. But like I says, children, students are not put first in Klein ISD right now, and that needs to change. Oh, that's enough. Good point. Um, I have been waiting for two years and counting to meet with the superintendent from a previous issue that I had with my daughter and with the grievance process. The superintendent has to close the door in Klein ISD. So a parent, a parent, community member, if you are wanting to meet with Jenny McGowan, good luck. If you're one of the special ones or a part of their clique or the make, that Klein is fine, which Klein is not fine, then you, you'll be able to meet with her. But if you're not a part of the clique, then you, there is no meeting with Jenny McGowan. Again, this lady makes $600,000 a year. She should have an open door and be wanting to graciously meet with parents, you know, employees, taxpayers. Um, but no, it's, it's a, it's a shut closed door to meet with her. I was actually told by Dr. Brian Greeney that he is Jenny McGowan. And I'm like, you're not Jenny McGowan. I want to meet with Jenny McGowan. So if you go to Brian, um, Greeney, he says he's, he's, you're talking to Jenny McGowan. So he is Chief of Education. So he's the sec, Jenny's second hand, well, one of her many hands, I'll put it that way. But, um, he's the one who runs and oversees the grievance process because the school board allowed Jenny to have been removed from this process. So she doesn't have to know what's going on, which is really sickening in a way. How is it like a CEO of a company doesn't want to know what's going on in their company? Whether if it's something like I says, good or bad that's happening, how do you not want to know? It just, again, I, I don't even know what to even say. I'm speechless, to be honest.
I'm sorry. I, I think the grievance process definitely needs to change. You know, I was in the military and in the military, you first take your, your issue to the person that you have. And if they can't solve the problem, then you go to the, their officer. And if you can't go that, you go all the way up to the, the general. But that's typically how that happens.
Yes. He is not an elective official. Um, I'm just going to go ahead and keep it raw with y'all. I don't care. So back to the grievance process. There was, again, remember I told y'all how the independent hearing officer works when you reach your level three? And it's, they're really not independent. Well, one, there was a, a person that had a level three, and it ended up being Dr. Greeney's former coworker in Willis ISD that was sitting in on a hearing. How is that an equal playing field? How? Just, it's not. He used to work in Willis, came back to Klein ISD. And if you go look, salaries are public information. He is one of the highest, besides Jenny, pay in this school district. Yeah, let that, let that one sink in also. So he was hired back into Klein ISD after he went to go work in Willis. So yeah, he's not, you know, voted in or elected, but he, he was brought in by Jenny McGowan to take, to take that seat or position. So, yeah.
I, I think that's what Bumpy and I want. I think that while she needs, she works for the board, and I think we need to return a sort of checks and balances to the system. So there's checks and balances just about in, in all our facets of government. We need to return the checks and balances to Klein ISD.
This is not municipal legislative legislature, this three months. And yes, they are, because they don't, people like me don't, my house sit on a shelf. So that's why they do it. Number two, public information. I really sense your frustration and I share it, but not within this environment. Over the last seven months, I've been trying to meet with my Congresswoman Wesley Hunt, who refuses to meet with me, who refuses to answer any of my calls. Set up in a meeting with me and then two days before the meeting said, oh, we will not. So I understand where you're coming from. And I think that that's something that maybe each of us, and I may pick this up myself, and just go through the process to make sure that there's good communication and good understanding. Because in my other life.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I want to help you as precinct chairs, because I'll be going to a meeting on Monday. There'll be hundreds of precinct chairs. But what I've noticed is they do not seem to focus on Klein. So I want Jack to first tell me some of your qualifications. Why you think you would make a good school board? I haven't really got to hear a lot from you. And I also want to know a little bit about to work with the precinct chairs in your area in particular, in all the parents county, and have your software on endorsement.
Well, I'm, I'm in the process of doing it. I'm, I'm actually the precinct chair for nine one six in Tomball for the Republican Party. So, but we're supposed to keep politics out of this, but at the same time, yes, I would, I would love their endorsement. I think block walking or I, I've heard a lot of precinct chairs have phone lists now that they communicate with, with their active voters. So if you feel I'm the candidate that you want to endorse, see if you can reach out to your phone list and, and tell them that I, I need their support, their vote. I think I feel like I'm up against a machine. You know, I feel like the school district is going to pull for the incumbents. And while Mr. Krieger is not an incumbent, he, he is an incumbent because he was, he was just on the board. So I could definitely use your help. I guess you missed the part earlier when I, when I spoke. You know, I've got 20 years' experience in supply chain operations management. I've had to manage budgets that way, and I feel like the district is not managing their money. They're, they're being fiscally irresponsible. They've had, they've approved deficits over the last three years and the millions of dollars. Twenty-three, thirty-three, and this year, maybe just because Denise was on, they, they, they cut it down to 21 million. So, and what's weird is for like the last three years, these seven members of the board up until Denise, I think Denise is the first time that we've seen a non-unanimous vote for seven, for like the last three or four years, it's been unanimous. So they meet every month. They have like 10 agenda items that they vote on. And you're telling me these seven people who represent the district, they all agree every single time? I find, I find that very odd because me and my wife, I don't think we could agree on 100. If, if I brought up 100 items, I don't think we could agree. So I find it odd that these seven people agree every single time. Is, is it their independent thought? Are they voting for their constituency? Or are they voting at, at the will of the superintendent? And, you know, I think, what do they say? Optics, I, I think are one thing. If you, if you, like, if you look, if you just watch any board meeting, if you look how the board is set up, there's a president, a treasurer, a secretary, trustees, then you have a lawyer and you have the superintendent. When you go to the board meeting, you would expect the president, and I would think to the right would be the treasurer, to the left would be the secretary, the trustees, and on the end, the superintendent and the lawyer. But what you have, when you, when you go to any board meeting, in the, in the middle, you'll have the president. To the right will be the superintendent, to the left will be the lawyer, and then the trustees. And if you go to the board meeting, the lawyer runs the meeting. To me, the person running the meeting should be the president, assisted by his officers, as, as she answers to the board. And it seems here lately, the board answers to her. Yes, Austin.
Successful, we would still be outnumbered by four to three. Okay, if I'm, if I'm bad this part. So I don't need affect changing with a few that kind of majority. Of course, there's other mechanisms in place, or there should be a place, but we don't have to necessarily have a trustee board, um, majority to, um.
I mean, I think I'd rather see four to three as a start opposed to seeing six to one, right? I, I want to see, and maybe those other four members will start to see that if they don't change or don't start, you know, voting what they truly believe, that they'll be replaced as well.
School board meetings for all different districts. And it's, it's very interesting to watch Klein's school board meetings compared to any of these local, uh, school districts. It's like bizarre land when they come into Klein. But I just find it, I commend it, even if you have, you get your strong community leaders. And you know, I mean, I may not come into Klein to sit in that, watching what's going on. It's, I mean, you hear, and as long, I mean, that's your, who you're talking to. So any of those questions you guys bring up, I mean, Sycamore had the same situation for a few years since 2021. We got three on, we have four leftists, and then eventually we got to now we have six conservative and one leftist. But it takes time and you don't, you're not guaranteed that you're always going to get those kind of viewpoints to be in a school district. But I just commend y'all for trying to get on there and speaking up because it's really your community you're talking to when you're on the board asking questions. And this quiet little group that's up there that never says a peep just drives us crazy. Don't watch Sycamore.
I, I promise you, if, if I get on, I, I would ask questions because I, I, I think sometimes when, when you see some of these people pour their heart out to the board, and then there's just silence, it's just completely rude, right? It's just, it's just not human decency. This person is sitting there crying or weeping, you should at least acknowledge them, ask them other questions. And maybe, maybe put it for a future agenda for, for the next board meeting because I, I know they can't talk about anything except for what's on the agenda. So.
As a student, the school district, also employees, go retaliate itself. Whenever they go to a school board meeting, for one, it feels terrible and you just feel, feel that. Or if I say the wrong thing, then like they're going to make me leave. So you are kind of feel that way. So it's, it's just, it's, it's their tactics to where us to even get someone to speak this hard. It's like literally I'm like dragging him because they're afraid. Myself and others, we go, we speak on behalf of employees or students or parents. But this is like, bro, but they created this whole like, you know, has been a lot that has to do with the attorney because the attorney is running the school, uh, the school board. I mean, you can see it, man, we say there was a young girl, maybe this was last year's school board meeting. Now the speaking at the meeting and the attorney just shut her off because she said the word principal or teacher, just because you said the word, but then yet I went and said it and I wasn't shut off. So it's like, make up your mind and pick and choose on how and who you're going to shut off. But a child, a child to get up and speak at a school board meeting and you're going to do that? And again, it's previous, this recorded, it's public information, it's out there. And I really hope the public start watching school board meetings, um, and to really look to see what's happening at these board meetings. But it's what they create, created this, where people are afraid to bring a little sign and vote it up. Because I think the other school board meetings too much, but people are afraid.
Well, the precinct chairs have a lot to do with all of this because I just saw Sycamore changed their whole school board. And they did it because of the community and they all showed up. There'd be 200 of us, yeah, agree. And we were the ruling majority. And so you watch the school board members and they saw their very hostile reaction to community members. We saw their reaction to parents that are speaking out. And so it just took people watching, and I know Sycamore is much bigger than Klein, but somehow you have to get the local grassroots people and your precinct chairs are really your local grassroots people knocking, helping people to spread this message. And I just encourage y'all to, I mean, I don't know, is anybody in here precinct chair for Klein area?
Just me.
So that's who we need to get down on this because, but I just see this kind of just life extension.
I, I did, I did email some of them. I'm trying to get their endorsement. You know, the people that we are running against, they do say they, that they are the same, I guess.
Yeah, I appreciate those comments. One more thing I want to just hammer home to you, and for those of you who may have come in. The team of eight is the board and the superintendent. And when they are all working as one, then you have no representation. Is your tax division paying your taxes, being the taxpayer, expecting to have your views represented? They aren't. Please understand that. The school board is the smallest entity of our republic. Our republic is founded upon taxation with representation. And of course, I believe we fought a revolutionary war about taxation without representation. So the school board is the smallest entity in government that exists where you expect to have your taxes that you pay be represented by who you vote in. And that's the majority of the, of the votes wins, and that's the way it works. But if that person does not represent you, then your taxes are going without any representation. And so this is what we have to change. There's a culture that is, is inclined that does not represent the constituents. Now, we're very fortunate to have a former school board member with us today, and that is Mr. Jim Smith. Jim, hold up your hands. There he is. All right. Now, Jim broke rights like I did because of the direction that Klein was going. And I'm so grateful for his support, what we're doing here to try to get new board members elected. He fully supports and he has seen it firsthand. He's on this cover. This board was voted number one school board in the state of Texas by Tasty, by Tasty. So Jim is a wealth of information and feel free to ask him questions as well. So just keep that in mind. Who, who is the school board representing? And we saw that most egregious thing that we saw was in this Klein sex trafficking case where no one has yet to be held accountable for that, except for maybe the whistleblower who was convinced that she needed to resign it. Why she did, I don't know. That's her, that's her thing. But she did, but no one in HR, no one in the police department, no one in the school administration has been held accountable. Some people have been shifted around, but no one has been, no one has lost their job. No one has been looked at and said, you're responsible for this. In February of two thousand and twenty-three and April of two thousand and twenty-four, students continue to be trafficked down the car can. And most likely other schools in Klein, in Klein as well, right? And and, and the board, I'll bring it back to the board. The team of eight did not hold the superintendent accountable for that. To do their own investigation. Now they'll tell you that they did their investigation, but that was only to contact the chief of police in Klein. And for him to check with the Harris County Sheriff's Department. That's not conducting your internal investigation. You have to put that teacher on administrative leave. And then you conduct your investigation. If she's innocent, you bring her back. If she's not, she's fired and held accountable and charges are taken. But that is not what happened. And that is the most egregious thing. And also no one in the school administration reported the CPS or any other government agency that we have children being harmed in Klein County. And that is a law that must be followed. You must report. Failure to report tantamount to losing your license as an educator. Every educator knows that. Nothing was done. It has to happen.
Thank you, Dr. Huff. I mean, I'm not, not necessarily that, but I think they should have had, and like Harris County should have got involved immediately, right? I don't necessarily disagree with that, where some of our constables report to judges, you know, city, city police report to the mayor. I don't have a problem with that, but it should, something should have been done. And I can't believe no one, no one has been fired from it. I think the person, you know, I, I would have think the assistant principal, something should have happened there. The principal maybe should have been demoted or something, but nothing, you know, well, then the only way to. I think the only way you'd be able to change that, you'd, you'd have to change like the chief of police of Klein ISD to an elected position. Right? Because then they're answering to the people and not answering to the superintendent. Well, I think Klein was like one of the first school districts ever to start its own police force. I think we do need a presence there. I'm, I'm in strong, you know, support that, what, oh, of the policy they do now where they have almost a police officer at every school. So I, I do support that. Now, where they report to, I'd be flexible to listen to what the people are saying. And if we made a delict position or we made them, or we made the police chief, just like the superintendent accountable to the board, I'd be in favor of that as well.
So Austin, I was actually responsible for developing and approving the policies for the district. As part of that process, the three, if they, well, let's just talk the seven. The seven have to finally negotiate and agree. And that's not really what happens right now. Right now, what happens is the policies are written by the administration and that's okay. That's all right. That's kind of a standard process. But at the same time, the board members need to be involved. And right now I don't believe that all board members are involved. I'm one of them. So if you want your policies to be representative, to take care of all that we're trying to actually get this switched over to, then we actually do have to start having those conversations. Can we switch all four? I doubt it. Right? They, they're pretty much in the flying fine team. But if we can at least get people on there that now say, wait a minute, we want this policy to read and to have in, then that starts the, the conversation. It needs to happen in that boardroom. And that's not where it's happening. Yes. Yeah. There's a lot of in and in a center that actually, uh, when it gets to level three, it's the board, but here's the level three. I actually did bring that up. I suggested it to the board president and, um, I was properly shut down. That's not a proper process.
But they choose, that's the thing in Klein ISD, the board chooses to hear that they want to hear or not.
Klein really wants their board meetings to be, um, non-chaotic is the best way to put it. They want it to see, they want everyone to believe that everyone's in agreement. And we can get in and get out. Valerie Swanson endorsed me last year and she said, if I can stand up there for 36 hours, y'all can be there for a few more hours. And I agree with them, right? We need to have conversations, but right now it is not allowed at all. Actually, Dr. Huff got up, had his two minutes. I wanted to ask a question and I was shut down. It's on video. If you want to watch it, feel free. I was shut down that I was not allowed to ask him a question, which is not accurate. So it's not the only way to change it though, is that we get like-minded people on that board. Like Mary Ann is, is actually telling us they did in Sycamore. And it will be chaos. I'm here to tell you, it will be chaos if we're successful for a little while, right? It's a big change. And if, I hate to say it, but if Donald Trump can take time out of his day to make a phone call to an individual, by golly, I can sit in that boardroom a few hours. It's okay. So, yeah.
Priscilla, well, what I feel like he's just part of the machine. I, 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 like I said, I make a pledge to go out and hear the parents and the students and hear their concerns as we're supposed to reflect their choices on what they want. Not just rubber stamp everything and do what the superintendent wants. So it should be, we're supposed to be representative of the people, not representative of the superintendent.
Okay. My name is Priscilla Lashley and my very first, um, experience with Dustin Craig, who is, um,
Who's my opponent?
About to announce his running for school board at that point. And it was during the time when the big topic, I'm not deep down in CRT right now, I'm just telling you what was happening during that time period. When we were all trying to figure out, what does this mean? I don't even know what this, these letter CRT means, all of that mess. And all of us started to go to the school board meetings. That's where I first met Dustin Craig. He was sitting in the back and I already knew that he was going to be running for school board. So I was trying to explain to him, hey, do you know what this CRT means? Are you aware? Because this is going to be an important issue and I'm a community member and I want to know if you know what this means. And he said, I'm so busy. I have no idea what's going on. I don't know what that means. I haven't had time to research it. So no, I don't know what it is. That was it. That was the end of the conversation. A few weeks later, when he was announced his running and he was, um, standing right up here at a Glenn Locke, um, uh, event just like this. Uh, he was asked, do y'all have CRT? Not do you teach it? Is CRT in the Klein district? Which it was, whole nother story. He said, absolutely not. And I said, well, how do you know? He said, because Jenny McGowan said so. And I said, really? You did the research it yourself? You don't know anything? You told me you don't even know what that means? Because Jenny said so. So is that just one indication as how these people are quickly, McGowan gets her claws on you fast. You do what she says and if I say it's not there, it's not there. Well, y'all, it was there. So I'm just trying to say he is a yes.
Don't you know that it was there because kids were coming home and telling their parents?
Yes.
So say that on the line.
Yeah, you do know it was there, not only because I found an entire YouTube presentation that I have printed out, but because kids were coming, um, home saying that there were things in their lesson plans. It, it is true. And so for him just to take that attitude of because Jenny says, that is the entire crux of the problem in Klein. It's because these school board members just go around saying Jenny said so. They're not using this thing up here. They don't care to. They don't ask question. None of that. Sorry, I didn't. Anyway, that is why we need somebody like Jack, who is not going to fall prey to the team of eight, who is going to be a person to speak his own mind, have his own thoughts, his own, uh, you know, digging. If, if, if a parent comes with a concern, ask questions, not just do what Jenny says.
And Bumpy as well. I know Bumpy's all, I, I believe Bumpy's on board as well.
That's, that's so busy with work. Like he just, uh, I mean, he travels a lot for work and neither week, we were just in a school board meeting, um, this past Monday, and obviously he wasn't there. And he wasn't even like plugged in remotely. So like there, again, there's no representation there. I mean, I get these come about, you know, work and different, it's a volunteer, I get that. But not even like plugging in remotely is, that's a problem. But so if you're not here and in the seat and you're gone away traveling and family things and all of that going on, then how do you know what's happening? Are you actually sitting down and reading, you know, grievances and things that are coming across your computer or desk? I mean, he's just a body warming his seats at this point and answering to Jenny on what Jenny wants to get done around this district. So the public needs to know that. We need a school board member that if you're, if you're not there, at least, I mean, plug in remotely to know at least what's going on. But you can go and watch a past school board meeting and know where to be found.
Thank you, thank you.
Same.
I, I, I believe that I don't, I haven't looked into that policy. I think, is, is there a, I'd have to ask Denise, is there a policy currently where there is a policy already in place? So there is a policy that's in place, I believe.
A parent actually reached out, let this tape about, which is this Starbait, the parent actually reached out to me late last night and said, it's happening at Klein intermediate. There is a boy that goes in the girls' gym locker room and it's changing. That's the problem and that's not okay. So it is happening. Yes. So I will be following up with this parent and, um, getting vocal about it, getting word out. Again, bringing this to the school board, superintendent, whoever I need to raise it and bring it up to, that's what I'm going to do because it's disgusting.
Well, if there's a policy in place and that's a policy violation, then that's something completely different. And whoever the vice principal, principal, that school should be held accountable to adhering to policies that Klein has. Yes. I mean, I think the first thing you could do i- is start going to the board meetings and, and letting the board see that, that things need to change. I, I mean, currently nothing's going to change unless their, their seats at risk. And for all intents and purposes, the Klein machine just keeps electing people that are going to fall in line with this superintendent. So they have to see that they are elected by the people. And if they don't do what the people want, then they'll be replaced. Any other questions? Oh, I, I, I think you missed a, my, my family has a history of service. My grandfather served World War Two. My, my father served in the military. I served in the military. I've got children that are inclined right now. So I want, I want to ensure that as they walk the same halls that I walked as, as I'm an alumni, that their future is protected, that we're doing everything we can so that they could succeed as they grow and graduate and go on to college or to a vocational school.
It's just like Jack's boys are in the Klein district. Jack's doing this for all of our reasons. There's a lot of people that run for selfish reasons, for pulling my office or for, because there's nothing convenient for Jack about these. This is actually taking a lot of time, raising this family, but he's doing this because he feels called to do this for a sense of duty and service to all of us. So I bought him for that, I think, and for, for wanting to stir up the pot a little bit. It's time. We need to stir up the pot, the pot in Klein. Democracy is not meant to be a, a seven o boat.
Like I said, i- i- if, if you want to help us, uh, money always helps, uh, on, on top of the precinct chairs. Uh, Austin, if you want to come up. Austin, if you want, if you want to come up here. O- obviously we could use the precinct chairs help to get people out to vote, but the, the other way to help us is I'll let Austin take it away.
To create additional awareness for what this, uh, dynamic group is achieving. So we're going to have, over and ask you and the people in your neighborhoods to may have contributed to, to our political action. Uh, stronger Klein, stronger future. I'll give you, I'll give you, and we, we accept donations currently to our Zelle account, which is strongerklein@gmail.com. I am the treasurer for the PAC. And so, um, um, I see them and I can, I can be assured that a hundred percent of what you donate is going to go to the furtherance of this particular initiative and supporting great candidates like Jack.
And Bumpy.
So please, and Bumpy. So please dig deeply, meet you all.
Thank you.